All right. We need a motion then to reconvene, open session. Thank you, John. Okay. All in favor of reconvening, open session? All right, thank you for attending this evening. We'd like to welcome you to our monthly meeting. Let's stand and say the pledge together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we do not have any reconveniences or sign-ups this evening or visitors to address the board. So we'll move on directly to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve all the items on the consent agenda? John and Angie? Any questions about any item, something we need to get more closely or pull? Okay. So we'll take our vote then. All in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda? Raise your hand.
I'm standing from the...
From the...
I was not gonna...
Okay.
But the rest are good.
Okay. So we could have pulled that vote in. That's okay. But that's all right. Okay. So the motion carries then. We'll get started right away then with our superintendent report.
All right. First off is I include information about the new board training requirements. There's two options in which to meet that requirement. The first one is a three-hour refresher training, which addresses the board's role in preventing suicide suicide. And so if you go to the three-hour training, you can go at the MSBA conference or there's a St. Louis one. That will cover you for three years. And so if you rerun, then you'd be covered into the second year, two years of a new term if you're... It would be up in April. Or in November, beginning of November, there's going to be a one-hour online refresher training. That'll be free. But if you choose to do the one-hour training, you have to do it each year. So if you want to do the three hours upfront or do you want to do it each year?
One is free.
So if you do want to attend the training down at the MSBA conference, send me an email or contact me because we'd have to sign you up for that. If you weren't planning to go down that Thursday, you'll have to be down Thursday, November 1st for that training.
Well, and in the past for those video training, we didn't have to have specific passwords. They send those to you. So when it opens in November, you have to send those to us. But so is that generally what the feel of everybody? That you're...
I just know one hour.
Okay. That way you can do it on your own time. Okay. Thank you.
So we've had a great start to the school year. Yeah, I'm not supposed to say it. It's been okay. Anytime we say that, then tomorrow's Friday, right? They're all looking at me like, "Are you serious? You're gonna say that?" No, we're not nerds. No, but we've had a great start to the school year. Teachers and the kids. It's great to have the back. Schools kind of, you know, help you to get in point of things. Put the first day attendance and membership council out here from the campus for you to review. Put the Misha manual for the Board of Education. It's a PDF I just included in there. Couple different items is I wanted also our mayor of Hillsborough, Mr. Buddy Russell. Mr. Russell, if you would, just stand up. So if nobody has met Mayor Russell, you probably see him around town. He's attending today.
Thank you.
I'm kind of nervous. This is my first school board meeting I've ever been to.
Well, you were at the Prop C committee meeting. You came to Prop C committee meeting. So that was close.
Well, yeah, but I used to be one of them parents, ten, fifteen. Twenty years ago, I did a lot of complaining and bitching and grating. Never did anything. Now, I try to help as much as I can. But I want to thank the school board and the school for everybody coming together in our community with what we did with the purchase of property. I just think that's an awesome thing. It's great to see the community all involved together. And you got my full support for everything.
Thank you for your work, too.
Yes. You're welcome anytime. You're welcome anytime.
Oh, I'll be back.
So it's been great. Cooperation with the city. I was actually down in Tennessee. I did a picture. Mr. Ramsey actually contacted me and was like, "There's a stranger man weed-eating along Highway 21."
He looked thirsty, so...
And Mayor Russell was actually weed-eating along the highway. So I wanted to make it look better. It just shows how much he cares about the community. So... We have a new program at the elementary, the Early Bird Program. So I'm gonna let Ms. Carol actually talk about that.
Well, I'm actually just going to introduce my speakers that I brought with me. So Adam and Jackie are here from Jefferson County Health Department. They are working with us to start an Early Bird Program at the elementary. They're really excited about. So I'm gonna let them take over because they're the pros and have the most information. I just get to introduce them. So there you go.
All right.
Well, yes. So hi, everybody. My name is Adam Peters. I'm a community engagement team lead for the health department. And we have been working with Rachel and Nurse Jessica over at the elementary school for probably about a year, a year and a half, of working on how we can better engage in physical activity for the kids. And so we did a couple of different surveys with the teachers and looking on how, ways that we could accomplish this. And one of the ways that we came up with was a before-school program. And fast forward probably six months after a lot of research and figuring out how this would work, we've come up with a, we have an evidence-based program that will go two days a week from 7:30 to 8:20. And the main goal of the program is to not only get the kids up and moving, get their brains ready for a school day of learning, but also to kind of increase their physical literacy, so their confidence to be able to move and do physical activity at recess, to partake in things like that. So we're really getting started here in September. It's kind of our big kickoff. And we're gonna have a program that runs every six weeks, so once every quarter or so is what we're planning right now.
There's a parent component to it also, which we're super excited about. We want to make sure that parents are getting engaged and informed. So the last day of each session, parents will be invited to participate in the activities with our children. The registered dietitian will be there, teaching them and the children how to prepare easy, healthy snacks. So hopefully, parents can take some of that information home with them and be able to utilize it, as well as we'll be working with our communication specialists to help develop items for Facebook and things like that. But the health department and the district have the opportunity to push out for parents and community members to see.
I print it off, little package for everybody. Get more questions.
Thank you.
Some more information on that. So, thank you, guys.
Thanks a lot. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Is there a cost component?
It is. It is free to the district. The only cost that we're occurring is our staff. And we are happy to be able to share them with you to help the district and our families.
Eltor, did you hear anyone about that as the year goes on?
Yes. Next year at this time, we will be compiling a bunch of data and evaluations from the district, from staff, from the children, as well as from parents. We'll be able to share all of that information and hopefully see this program grow.
Great. That's wonderful.
All right. And the final thing I wanted to talk about is homecoming parade changes. Is how to, that's gonna be upon us before we know it. We had a meeting. We were visiting with the high school and talking about some changes that we can make and how we're gonna proceed with the parade. There's consensus that parade's a core part of our homecoming community, but we also have to try to figure out, how do we manage it? We allow every group to kind of participate. But with that, we had an incident last year where an individual fell off a trailer. And then what becomes question of liability. Who's responsible? Who's this? And I think out of that is the individuals that are driving those vehicles with these, mainly outside teams, outside organizations. I don't know that those individuals understand what they're taking on when they do that. You know, it was kind of, some of those questions were, who's responsible for it? Those students riding those boats, specifically typically it's youth football, youth cheer, they sign out of school. They're not our responsibility. They're participating in a parade that's occurring on a city street. It comes down Leon Hall, but it's Fort Hillsborough. But they're not students at that point, as far as under the district.
Well, they've signed out, too.
They've signed up. Is in a way to kind of monitor just these random people jumping into the parade is setting a deadline for participation and requiring, hey, you know, John, you're going... If I'm willing to drive a vehicle, I'm providing my driver's license. I'm providing my insurance card. And I'm gonna work with attorney to develop a waiver that you understand you are responsible for the people on your trailer. If they fall off, you are personally in financial liability. Is very... I... And then all that has to be turned in. And then we'll give them a placard that they put on their vehicle. If they do not have it, they're not participating. As such, we had a meeting, I am going to be the star of that because invariably there's gonna be conflict. All right? Is somebody's gonna try to pull in the parade? Teacher, redoners, I'm gonna be the gatekeeper of the parade, especially if you want. If you have your documents. You're not on our checklist, you're not in the parade, which is gonna create conflict. Somebody's gonna try to get in there, the decorated float. We have 40 kids on there, and they're not gonna be able to participate. But we have to be able to manage the groups that are in there and so it's not kind of for all. We will communicate with those organizations for that. There's potential that the public is gonna reduce the amount of people that want to participate. You know, because that's taking on a lot of personal liability. I don't think that some of these people that are like, hey, I'll take them, don't understand what they're taking on. So we talked about some of the candy type items. Do we continue to throw candy? We went through a period where we were done with that we didn't throw candy, then we did throw candy. It's hard to prevent it. Somebody's just gonna bring candy because that's what they do in a parade. So we didn't make any specific, like, you know, you can't bring candy. Any other items on that? The routes?
No, the route is fine. It's just really, it's the entry process. And I have already gone over that with one of the student council sponsors. I went over that yesterday.
I'm hopeful that the new sidewalks along upfront will assist us because it provides a very firm barrier with a curb now rather than upstairs. So that will provide hopefully levels of safety. And we'll continue to work with the city on that, try to make that a safe path while still having it. Any thoughts or things from your perspective we haven't addressed, or begin to address?
Maybe probably put you down here and probably...
No, we will. Should otherwise.
Your job will be harder. But it's a safety thing.
It's a safety thing. And it's, and I think it's right by the people who are gonna be participating in the parade because it's not an issue until it's an issue. And you thought you were just trying to do something nice for your team and your insurance company and all that is kind of... But also can't be ours because we're liable for our band and those things are participating. It was either we do a form like this or you can't participate. And that does, is a major culture shift in our parade, too, is our kids have, the little kids have signed out. The youth football, they look forward to it. In order to continue that, they have to pull the steps.
Well, they have to have some kind of parental supervision around.
Yes.
Maybe they'll just walk and...
It's a good assumption, actually.
Is that included in the report? Okay. Then we'll move on to Georgia's or facility grounds.
Hey, Dean, there.
Hello.
Well, our report will be short. I apologize because this month come up really fast on me. So I'm gonna show them for you. Next month may not be a short time.
Don't apologize for short.
This will be a short one today, sorry. But anyway, as you see, we've done right great. I agree with everybody. I've been around the facilities. They look great. I thought we had a great year to start. A lot of hard work went into from everybody that helped us get everything together and made a lot of things look good. Parking lots are done. We're unsure if they're gonna make it before school ended started, but they did. But we've accomplished that pass. We've got a lot of roads fixed now finally. And we're working on a couple HVAC issues that we're trying to get finished up as well. So everything's going really good. So thanks to the whole staff and the whole community that actually helped us do this. So we're pretty proud and excited about it. So we're gonna show you some pictures next week, or next month. Some of the kind of interesting stuff. You haven't seen some of like the things they've done at the junior high with the bathrooms and stuff and all that. It looks really good at junior high. We're really excited about that building. And we've done a lot. Our high school's come along really nice. We find, made it look pretty good. We've still got a long ways to go, but we're gonna get there. But next month, I show you the before and after picture. I think they're gonna be kind of neat. So we're excited about that part. So anyway, as we go forward and everything, we've still got some work to do, as you know. Spade areas look good over at the elementary, as well as our roofs. We got the work orders done. 114 open, kind of quiet month for us, but that's okay. One of the things I do want to bring everybody attention to, so you know, Dr. I and everybody knows this already, what's going on in Eddie. But if you're at the Gymboree tomorrow night, which if you get a chance to come, it'll be kind of fun inside and just see the high school open up finally for sports. You're gonna see a light pole that's out there by the kind of concession stands, northwest pole. We had it hit by lightning and it messed up the whole bunch of lights over there. Has been undone, thanks to Kelly and Jen and someone that's helped us out. But it is on insurance claim. So we are gonna get it fixed, but it will not be fixed for all night. So you may have some people go, hey, what's wrong with your lighting system? It has been addressed. It's all gonna be taken care of. So the next home game should be good to go, they tell me. So you may get questions, so be not broadsided. Yes, we know the lights are out, but there's only two banks working out of the four. So that's where we're at. Okay? We're excited and hope everybody else is, too. So any questions?
Does the football field just attract lightning?
It does. And the reason why it does is because of the amount of power that actually exists in there. It actually, electric actually brings lightning to it. It really does. And that's why a lot of places, they recommend us put light rods in. So... I did the same. Neither did Eddie. He ain't our block. But we tried...
Right. I told you already, but that is the accident of the intermediate, but those lines.
Right.
The parents that have to leave the intermediate.
Does help balance, things like some of the traffic flow. And as we get across the street, we're gonna get better traffic. So thank you very much, you guys. Appreciate it, too. Thank you.
Okay. Financial report is next.
I think it's been a short week. Mine will be shorter, too.
Oh, no.
Because it's July and I'm still working on June to try and get everything wrapped up. So no pretty graphs this month because we wouldn't see anything. And I've got no date of the plot. And so this is where we are. We haven't received much revenue yet for the year. We haven't spent a lot of money. You guys are not paying off our teachers yet. So we're running this far back up.
Off to a good start.
Off to a good start, that's right. I've gotten assessed valuation in from the county. Only our initial assessed valuation. Just got an email this morning, I believe, saying they would have their post-board legalization numbers to us next Monday. And that's what I use to do all my reports as far as setting the tax level. But we have some good initial indicators. I mean, it's a reassessment year, so our growth is good overall, about three and a half percent. So may change a little once I get the finalizations back. There were some things that were protested, but not a lot. That's good. That's good. We want to see our numbers go in positive. The only other thing I really have to tell you, I've submitted my preliminary ASBR information to the state. The ASBR is our annual secretary of the board report. That's basically how we get all of our financial information funneled to the state. Big process this year because of all the coding changes. Desti kind of changed the platform, not the platform, but how the report's going to look because it's gonna break down costs by location, by building. So there's a lot of coding changes happening. But I got that initial information to them, so we got our money today. But I'll still be working on finalizing that until the auditors get here. So other than that, I don't have anything else. Do you have any questions?
When are the auditors coming?
Mid-September, the second, third weekend. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Technology report?
Read off the screen of my paper here. We submitted 138 work orders, completed 112. We started deploying the Chromebooks, letting us buy. So thank you very much. Buildings really appreciate that as well. I haven't quite finished all of them yet, but we're trying to get them done. The new elementary addition, we got that set up with the new technology. I'd word this kind of the final step, getting teachers in their room and ready to go for the start of the year. So that's good to see. We had some training going on. We had over half our department involved in some kind of training. Aaron and Ethan went to Missouri Tech Talk Conference. Karen led two secretary trainings on Moses data and attendance. Doug led part of our fully orientation by introducing them into the campus. Ethan presented on Google Apps and technology work order system and other items. So I was proud of them to lead all those trainings. They didn't have faculty to pull us and train everybody. We had a lot of work with Doug's boiler, trying to get our data to sync with all of the software programs we have in the classrooms. Destiny library program, there's a big, long list. I appreciate his work with that. Also, other people involved that needed as well. We're all ready to go for the start of the school year. So that's going on. And I want to just thank the team for working hard, being flexible. Really had a big push this year to get a lot of stuff done for the start of the school. We get everything quite done. Like I said, we got some Chromebooks deployed and stuff, but it was really hard. Got the classroom set up and ready to go. We have to touch every classroom and get them through the new year.
Thank you. Okay. And our final report, we're gonna go from Georgia and Michael. We have a little presentation here.
It's kind of a short one, actually.
That's the theme tonight. Yes.
So I have a report that I'm gonna get next month. It'll go over with Dr. I, Miss O'Gramp, and we're gonna do like sort of reviews ahead, like make it good. So that's coming next month and I think the month after. Georgia was gonna do some anxiety and stuff in school. But we just kind of wanted today to just talk a little bit about school starting. It's our senior year, which is exciting, scary. We're gonna just apply to college. But yeah, we wanted to say the parking lot is awesome.
Absolutely beautiful.
Yeah, so much better. And the other thing we kind of wanted to go over was the new schedule, which at the high school was a pretty, pretty big change, like as far as from the blockage we had. And yeah, with the advisory session. And so far, I really like it. I think it's really nice just because of the consistency of it. And I guess the first two days, we did the Friday schedule with the shorter classes and the longer advisory. It was, it was pretty cool because you have like, you have like the extra time like every day with the same group of people. And the teachers that you have for advisory really get more like time with you. So it's pretty nice.
Also, we'd like to acknowledge how many junior grads we're having this year since we gave that change to the law. We're gonna have, I think, three?
Well, we haven't brought any to the board yet. They have to apply, but we have two or three that are interested in graduating this year.
So that change in law has really affected our high school. And I'm pretty excited for those students. They're probably, they're gonna do great. We have a lot more students that are going to the college, like signing out part of the day and going to the college and coming back. So our students are really going out of their way to achieve higher academic achievement. So we'd like to say that's pretty great.
Very good.
Thank you.
There'll be more next month.
Always keep this on our toes. Thank you. All right. So that finishes all of our reports. And there is no unfinished business from last month. So we'll move on into the new business of the meeting. First item, we are looking to approve a resolution that interests us into a lease transaction. So I need a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the reorganized school district R3 of Jefferson County, Missouri, to approve a project and enter into a lease financing transaction with First State Community Bank and authorizing certain documents and actions in connection therewith. Turn the page. The purchase of real estate or real property commonly known as 264 Bridle Ridge Lane, April, Missouri. So that said, that's the motion. Go ahead. Okay. So we have a first by Beth and a second by Jane. Now, this seems a little awkward or backwards or something.
Yes, I was just looking at that when I organized. We're gonna do a lease before.
Okay. But this is just kind of the formality of it.
This is the formality of resolutions. Mr. Flynn is here. He can explain. What is this document?
Good evening. Sean Flynn.
I'll be back.
Give the word out. So the resolution firming here tonight approves a lease financing. We provide funds to acquire 45 acres. The resolution actually approves two leases. It's a lease, lease-back structure, a fairly common financing structure used by governments in Missouri, where you will lease, lease the property to First State Community Bank and then they'll lease it back to you in exchange for rental payments, which will be equal to the principal interest of the loan. It'll be a 10-year loan, 2.95 percent. And the resolution authorized the loan up to $615,000.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. So the motion before you is to approve this lease transaction, basically?
The resolution.
The resolution is what we're approving for the transaction. Okay. All in favor of approving that resolution? Raise your hand. Thank you. So now we have another resolution, right?
Yeah.
And I need a motion to approve the resolution of the Board of Education Hillsborough, of Hillsborough R preschool district regarding the purchase of real property from the Community Treatment Incorporated.
So, we'll.
Thank you, Rob. Okay. Questions on that, or you have some explaining?
This document is just the official resolutions that the title company and, uh, the title company and the bank needs for, do you need this as well?
No, but I, I think you're correct. I think this resolution, uh, authorizes the purchase of property. The resolutions adopted authorizes the financing of the property. So, it's a little bit backwards, but it.
Yeah, body, now you can buy some.
All right, okay. So, we have one more resolution to approve. Do I have any other issues or comments or questions? Okay, all in favor of approving the resolution for the purchase? All right, very good. Item C has to do with setting up our tax hearing for next month. This is something we do every year. Um, I need a motion for the Board of Education to conduct a tax rate hearing to be held at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, September 24th, 2019, and that the notice be published in accordance with state law. Do I have a first, but that one's.
Correct, I still move.
Thank you. We'll let Johnny first, this is shaping the second backwards, moving things backwards tonight. Short and backwards, those are. Any issues with that date or time or questions about the hearing date? Kelly will present that to us next month, yes. Okay, all in favor of approving this date, the tax hearing? All right, very good. Item D, um, we need to approve, or we have a motion to approve, the IDEA vocal compliance plan certificate? Um, do I have a motion to approve that motion? Thank you, Beth and Jane, second. Any discussion or questions about that, that compliance plan?
Are we really even having options here? I mean, that's pretty much what we have to do.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a, it's a state plan that everyone is required to adopt. We just have to go through the process every single year, and then I turn it into the state, so.
So, hopefully we have to go through, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Any other issues? All in favor of approving this IDEA compliance plan? Okay, thank you very much. And the last item then. Um, we need to have a short discussion and possible action regarding the, the new law for physical exams, correct? So, John, you want to share some information with us about that first, so we can.
Yes, Ms. Marino would come on up. She is, oh, why is this, is before you this evening is, uh, Nisha, our state, has let everybody, uh, issued their new handbook and went and is now allowing physicals to be done every two years. Uh, historically, we've always followed the Nisha handbook. And they have always, up until this point, said, you need to want every year, you had to get it done after February 1st. And so, um, to provide some clarity for the few here and talk about what do we want to do as a Hillsborough community? Um, Mr. Marino and myself have had discussion regarding this issue. Uh, visited some medical professionals in the community who think that we just keep it at a one year because of the age of the kids, that only require them athletically, and, um, you're able to, we're checking up on our kids from a safety standpoint, when we start junior athletics, eighth grade, and all those different body changes, um, that's just safer. And so, with that, um, that would be our recommendation. Some of the issues that we talked about, uh, is probably presumably going to the two-year. I'm making the assumption that it's insurance-based. From that, you know, with the new wellness and people get, uh, you know, you go to get one physical a year, the second one you have to pay for. I'm assuming that's probably, uh, one of the factors to go into a two-year. Have you heard anything given? You were going to comment that.
No, in talking to other districts, some districts are all like, some are saying they're going to go with the two. Some are saying they're going to go with one, some are going to the boards as we are tonight. I can tell you that after Dr. Isaacson and I originally talked, uh, Gail and I sat down because Fall Sports Service are really going through these physicals and getting uploaded and tracking them, this, that and the other. And there are, I don't want to put a number on it, there are several physicals where the doctors have checked. You will see me again next year, I cannot approve two-years.
Mine did.
I mean, and, and I'm okay with that. And that's what I was telling Dr. Isaacson. The reason that it's coming to now is because even though Nisha sets the bylaw, we always follow Nisha bylaws, as a local district, we can set a more quote-unquote restrictive type bylaw on it and say, no, we're going to require our kids to get a physical every year and do things the way that we've always done it. I looked back and did some history on it, and I can go back as far as 20 years. It was always the way that we've done it, and it worked. And so, this year, my administrative assistant, I, Gail, we said, and we talked about what was going to be, I don't want to say the easiest for us, but what was going to not be a clerical nightmare, what was not going to be a, how can we continue to track this? Because technically, you could have a student right now, think of a physical in December of 2017, that's good. For football right now, or across country, or whatever we have to offer in the fall. I don't. I don't like that. And there, and, and kids are at a point in their life where something's changing every year. And so, I think it's important that they're still seeing. Um, I think that if we were to continue to do it the way we've always done it, that's what our parents are used to. It eliminates a lot of the confusion that this has caused. This has caused some confusion, um, and that it would just let us continue to operate the way we have, which has proven to work year in and out.
I feel it's so funny that the health department's here because you guys can't speak to this, but, and I'm in healthcare, and, um, and my doctor did that, and we talked about it. The crazy thing is, why did Missouri as a state go against the, what American Pediatrics Association recommends, which is yearly? So, that's so bizarre, but do you guys know anything about why they changed?
I don't know why. I know we recommend, our nurses recommend every year.
And it's like so important. And unfortunately, the kids that are not in sports don't get a yearly. Every kid needs a yearly, but that's up to their parents. But I agree, I think it should be yearly, especially most, like my pediatrician was like, I'm not signing this for two years, you got to come back. But I don't, I don't know why Missouri changed it.
Was there any other reason other than insurance?
I, I can't even tell you that.
Was there a discussion?
Oh, yeah, this, so this went on the ballot in April that all, every member's school in the state of Missouri votes on, and it passed unanimously.
Okay, so, I mean.
So, the member's schools.
Did anybody give any reasons? I mean, that's my thing.
Nisha and their whole pamphlet they hand out.
Cause I mean unanimous, that's, seems like.
I, I don't want to say, I guess unanimously it would be everybody, it, it passed by a majority.
Okay.
And who, who votes on that?
The member's schools. So, the 500 member's schools in the state, all of the state voting.
I mean, is it a hardship thing? I mean, is it just that, you know?
It's just so convenient, you only have to go there every two years.
Well, in their eyes, a seventh grader, an eighth grader, an eleventh grader.
Well, I mean, you know, I, I mean, I was at a, I was at a, a charity thing where, you know, they provided free physicals for the working poor because it was an issue, you know? So, I mean, I was just wondering, is it because people want to be in it, but they can't afford it, or, you know, what is the deal?
Well, like how much is it right now? If you went to, there's, I think, how many places right now? Well, what do you guys charge? Is it three?
We, we do have, um, opportunities to grant for, yeah, get free physicals.
They were at that event and providing free physicals.
Yeah, so I, I mean, you couldn't really go with the, it's a hardship issue for everybody, because if there are places for.
But, but I mean, the point is, is they were providing it, but only about, you know, only so many got through on that day, you know, it was a one-day thing.
Dr. I, help me out, our insurance would charge $90 if you got.
I made you say.
Yeah, I, I, I made you say, so don't speak to that.
And it's, you know, he has his free well.
Yeah, but you can incorporate the physical into the free well.
Yes.
So, that's free.
Unless, unless he had to get another one within the 12 months, then it would be $90 if they just say. However, instead of paying the 90, I would go to one of the health clinics.
You could go to the chiropr-, there's two chiropractors here, they both do them, and how many, I think they even had it out like $20. Wasn't it $20? I, I don't want to say, because I'm not sure, but I thought it was pretty reasonable, they had a sign outside. But anyway, I'm just, I just think it's interesting.
I just don't want to dismiss it offhand when, you know, the thing passed by a majority of schools and, you know, there clearly is some pressure somewhere to do this.
But I could see, you know, why in Boot Hill, in rural Missouri, that.
I mean, and yeah, we got some places like that, you know, trailer park kids just don't necessarily have, you know.
I wasn't necessarily talking about econ, economy. I was talking about availability of developers.
That's true.
You know, in the rural areas and why those schools would have voted to go two-years. So, I assume that you didn't vote to go two-years.
My, my only concern is that, and I know you're probably aware that if there's any students who want to participate and they can't afford a physical that you work with, the health department, or you direct them somewhere, and I know you do that as well.
Just like, just like if there are parents who, some of them that don't have insurance, and that, we have avenues that we can help them with.
I just ask that we continue those avenues.
We, we help them to find that insurance and.
I mean, as a school board, we're supposed to be here for the safety, and for the kids, and really, it happens in a year, and these, in this age group, it's like.
But, but I mean, you know, the timeframes are, I'm going to say they're arbitrary, but we could have it every six months and be even safer, every three.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if you're going with what the, what do we all do? We go with what our doctor says, and the American Pediatric Association recommends yearly. It's, I think it's a no-brainer. I don't understand why Missouri did that. It didn't.
Missouri didn't do it, the schools did. You know, the schools did.
I, I know.
Nisha went to, they have a sports advisory committee, and that committee recommended listening. I, I was shocked in the past.
It does seem like a clerical nightmare for you guys.
And that's what I was trying to explain to you guys. It is because you, you have to go through it. What I was telling you was, I could, today I could get a, uh, a ding or whatever on my email that says, hey, 83 kids' physicals are expiring in a week. Tomorrow I could get one that says 17 kids are expiring the next day. Every day, you're going to get a ding of, hey, in, in the fall, in the winter, in the spring, before it all starts, someone's going to do the worst. So, that's why we chose this year, and when I say we, myself and Gail, whenever we talk about it, to stick with what we've always done for this year, just for the simplicity of it and getting it started. And then the more we thought about it and talked about it, I, I mean, personally, won't speak for the district, but I don't, I don't like the two-years. I don't want, I would rather our kids receive every year.
And it's just so interesting, because I, of course, like me, like other parents saw the two-years, so I took, I had my go to pediatrician, and I just thought, well, if it's just going to be two-years, I'm still going to bring my kids every year because you're, that's how you should treat your kids, but whatever. But she just, that, mine was one of the pediatricians that was like, no way. And I called her about it to say, you know, what, if she'd maybe heard about it from her end, to see why Missouri changed it. But, um, she didn't know, and she said a lot of them weren't really upset by that, because they're getting the two-years and coming across like, you know.
And I can tell you that there are several doctors, based on what I've seen and what Gail has worked on, that have said, no, you come every year. And they, they were right, this, this was only good for one year. They're writing it on the two-year form.
Well, I'd rather be safe than sorry.
Do we need a motion, or are we just?
I think we just need to give a directive.
It's more of a directive. Can I have one?
Cause it's a procedure.
Termination question, because we have had long talks about this, so, from your perspective, kind of recommendation, you recommend stay with the February date?
My recommendation is to do what we have always done up until Nisha changing their bylaw this year. That we continue to work under the old guys, which is a more restrictive standard than what Nisha has now, as a February 1 date. So, if a student gets a physical, if they got a physical February 1 of this past spring in 2019, their physical was good for the remainder of that spring season and all of this school year. So, now as we move forward, these kids get their physicals, they're good. Because a physical, here's the other confusion that happens, and I've explained this to several parents in the last couple of days. The doctors will say, this is good for a year. A doctor's year is not a school year. Our year is July 1 to June 30. So, that physical's only good for that school year. That's why Nisha would say, if it got done after February 1, this was good for the rest of this school year and all of the next school year.
You know, the problem is that a lot of parents are under the assumption that if they, they did the two-year, and so now you're going to have to like re-tell everybody.
Well, we, yeah, I'm not worried about that. I think, I think that'll actually be easier than what we're doing right now, to be honest with you. And I think it just.
Compared to where you're accustomed to it.
Yeah, it's what we've always done, and this year, we didn't change it, we're still doing what we've always done.
I just mean, cause well, with the emails we got, we got the two-years. So, some people, people will probably be like, yay, it's only every two-years, and they got it done, and they're hoping that that would work, but.
But see, I'll explain it on the board. On the board?
Your recommendation. Communicate that.
Absolutely. It's easier to say.
Sure. And in the long run, I don't think most parents are going to be less about that.
No.
Okay, so, as a group, as a board, we agree with what he's planning to proceed with, his recommendation. Okay.
Thanks.
It's been so long.
It was a joke.
Uh, sure.
I did.
Sorry, no, it's all right.
Bring it up.
All right. That is the last item on our list of new business, so we will recess, um, open session, and we thank all of you for coming this evening. So, I need a motion to recess, open.
A motion.
All in favor of recessing?